First off, we'll have roll call to establish a quorum. Tim Foose?
Present.
Ted Gibbs?
Present.
Martin Corr?
Present.
Robert Gregory? Barry? Victor Contreras?
Here.
Doug Schnouts?
Here.
Danny Hydeman?
Here.
Mike Taylor? Marcell Camp Gibhardt? Marcell, you there? Randy Schwinn is here. John Legren or Lindgren?
Here.
Dr. Jerry Riley? Jill Bennett?
Here.
Jackie Nolte? He was here earlier.
Here. Here.
Steven Fonville? James Porcel? Doris Toobing?
Present.
Doug Spillman?
Present.
Willie Aguero? Steve Ramsey?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Housekeeping rules again. If you're going to speak, turn your mic off or turn your mic on. But we appreciate if you would turn it off while you're listening because we get a lot of feedback here. When you want to make a motion, say your name, your motion, and when you want to second it, say your name that you seconded. And when I call for the vote, I'm only going to call for the nay votes. And if I don't hear any nay votes, then I will figure that everybody is approving the motion. That will kind of speed things up a little bit. So we're going to go ahead and get the meeting started. First thing is item number two, citizen's be heard. There are none here, but is there anybody that's logged in to be heard by this board at this time? Hearing nobody, we will move on to item number three, which is the consent agenda. Is there any problems with the minutes of last board meeting or the financial report that was sent out?
Motion to approve, Tim Foose. Second, Victor Contreras.
We have a motion by Tim Foose and seconded by Victor Contreras to go ahead and approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those against the motion say nay. Hearing no nay votes, the motion carries. We can move on to item number four. This is our reports that were sent out. Adam, do you have anything that you want to add to yours?
Yeah, I just want to add one thing. So a little over a week ago, Lou Portillo, who is working for Nano Stone, had sent the 30-day pilot to TCQ. Where now it resides up there at TCQ, how long it takes them to review, I'm not for sure. As far as I know, TCQ is still working from home. And talking to the water master this last week, he told me that he thinks that they're going to work from home throughout to the end of the year. So we'll see how that goes. But yeah, on the 30-day pilot, I don't know how long TCQ is going to take on their review. If there's any other questions or comments, I'm willing to take those now.
Are there any questions for Adam?
No, but this Mike Taylor, I apologize for being late here.
All right. Alberto, do you have anything that you want to add?
Yes, sir, the only thing I want to add is with the COVID-19, if you recall, the governor allowed us to do this teleconference thing through video or calling in for meetings, public meetings. There has been initiative by some groups to try to get this thing passed and make it more standard after COVID and after stuff within a year. And so entities like the Lions and some groundwater districts are interested in continuing with this teleconferencing. Just making y'all aware that there may be some laws passed or some initiatives to inform the governor that they would like to continue with this conference. I'm not sure how Canyon Regional feels, but just heads up that there are some initiatives to continue using teleconferencing because it helps with people's schedules and timing and the sort, so just an FYI.
Okay, turn it off. All right. Any questions for him, Alberto? Teleconference, teleconferencing might be the new normal.
It might be the new normal.
Okay, Graham, do you have anything you want to add?
No, sir, I do not, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Graham? Okay, we'll move on to Trihydro. Pat, is there anything you want to add?
No updates, happy to answer any questions.
We got any questions for Trihydro? And this is the first time in over a year that I got the name right, so.
Thank you.
That's a good sign. LNV, anybody for LNV online?
Yes, sir, this is Marcus Neiser and happy to take any questions. I will add that I've got a little more current information on the Dunlap tanks cleaning and lining. I think I stated in the report that we'd be doing a final walkthrough this week. I do think they're coming back this weekend to finish up the cleaning on the exterior, according to the inspector's report today. However, they did take tanks down and made repairs where they saw a couple leaks on each tank and were very close to wrapping that contract up.
Marcus, seeing as how we're having problems with putting water in the tanks right away and we have leaks, is there any way that we can maybe get them to extend their one-year warranty so we don't have problems in one year and two days?
We could possibly negotiate that. I mean, they are a little bit over on days, we've been working with them, but I guess we could have that discussion, yes, sir.
All right. I just don't, seeing as how we're having so many problems right off the bat, you know, it's not a good sign that this product is going to hold. Any other questions for LNV? Not utility engineering, anybody online? David, you there? All right, we don't have nobody from utility engineering. LAIN?
Albert, I could speak for LAIN. If you recall, we have our applications are due June 15th. And these applications are for the Lake Dunlap crossing underneath the river and the flood wall, what it's called was a water treatment plant. So they're due June 15th and they're working to complete the applications for us.
Okay, are there any questions about the grants that we've applied for? All right. Trey, are you online?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Is there anything you want to update the board on?
Sure. So a couple of things, I'll start with the good news. We finally have a court date where we're going to go see the judge and get a scheduling order in the preload case. And that date is going to be July the 20th. So it's going to be a Zoom meeting, just like this, with the judge or a Zoom hearing. But on that date, the court's going to enter a scheduling order and provide us with a date certain for trial. I had reported to the construction committee last week that most likely the trial date will be sometime in 2021, but we're headed the right direction. We've also been engaged in continued dialogue with the parties in the preload lawsuit. We are making some definitive progress towards a resolution. At this point, there's still ongoing discussions with Trihydro, who's not a party to the lawsuit. And we're expected to have a conversation with their attorneys sometime within, hopefully, this week. And we're going to do what we can do to try to bring that issue to a head and maybe even get it settled. Also concerning preload, I've had discussions with their attorney concerning us putting the Wagner tank into service. There's been an agreement by preload to do that. At first, they were going to draft a document, and now they've changed their minds and they want me to draft a document. But we're going to sever out the Wagner tank from the Leisner tank so that we could put the Wagner tank into service and we can also get the warranty repairs performed on that tank, notwithstanding the pending lawsuit over the Leisner tank. Any questions on preload?
Do you have any questions for Trey about the preload lawsuit? Hearing nothing, Trey, go ahead and move on to the next one.
Yes, sir, there was also a lawsuit that was filed by Cunningham Construction against Canyon Regional. We're the defendant in that case. Our answer date is June 22nd, but I actually went ahead and filed our answer today. The filing of that lawsuit was a result of Canyon Regional's termination of Cunningham from the Wells Ranch Treatment Plant Expansion Project. And so that's been an ongoing thorn in our side for the better part of a year. And it's become very apparent to us that Cunningham wasn't going to do what they were supposed to do to complete the contract. So we terminated the contract and filed a claim against a performance bond. And their response was to file a lawsuit against Canyon Regional. So we've now answered that suit. Part of the discussions that we're going to have with preload that I mentioned earlier relative to, excuse me, with Trihydro relative to the preload lawsuit, we'll also discuss certain allegations that Cunningham has made against various of Canyon Regional's vendors, including Trihydro, in the lawsuit. We're going to address all the concerns that are raised in the suit. At this point, the problems that we've had getting a court date and getting any real attention from the court to get traction in the preload lawsuit, it looks like we're going to be the beneficiary of that in the Cunningham case because in that case, we're the defendant. So it'll be interesting to see how the other side of that coin looks. If there's any questions about the Cunningham suit, I'm happy to answer those.
Have any questions for Trey about the Cunningham problem? Hearing none. Trey, is there anything else you want to talk about?
No, sir, that's all I have at this point.
Okay. Lou, do you have anything you need to report?
I've got my report on page 26. That's just an update on what's going on with the GBA litigation by the two litigants, the Williams and the Skonard people. And I think that's self-explanatory. I did send a recent case. Well, first of all, let me ask, are there any questions about the report on 26 and 27 and a little bit of 28? And I'm trying to keep the formatting of that report sort of standard so everybody can follow along each month.
We have any questions for Lou about that issue?
All right, hearing none. I do want to report, Trey, this is a pretty interesting case. If you haven't seen it, there's a Fifth Circuit case that I sent over to David that was filed May 29th, 2020. It came out of the Western District of Texas. And it's really mostly a Toma, Texas Open Meetings, that case. But it involves the Brazos Valley Groundwater Conservation District, and it touches on a lot of issues. I promised David that I would be brief about this. There's really two generalities that come out of the meeting and the rest I'll make copies available or you can get copies from David. But it is a Fifth Circuit decision applying some Texas law. Here's the two things that are clear. And that is the board member at an open meetings, meeting like tonight, does not have an exception to the requirement where he can jump off the board and get into a discussion about what he wants to or she wants to put on the next meeting agenda. There's a rather strong dissent about that by Judge Edith Jones, that the court misread that, that that request to have an agenda item at the next meeting is available to both citizens and to board members. But the court held otherwise. So our practice conforms generally to what the Fifth Circuit held. The more interesting part of this case turns on the fact that this Brazos County Groundwater District had existing wells, new wells, and wells with historic use. And when the great city over there, Bryan, decided to put a new well in, but didn't get it in to qualify as a historic well, it affected one of the existing board members, which is why we've got a convoluted case. But the general rule that came out of this case is that equal protection, due process, and in Article 1, Section 16, constitutional taking are not barred by the United States Constitution's 11th Amendment. In other words, those claims can be made. And there's some fairly interesting discussion of the status of groundwater law after the day decision involving the EAA. And I'm going to leave my report at that. It's worth reading, although it's not a dispositive case on Texas law. But for those of you that are interested in how groundwater districts function and some of their methods of regulation, it's a good read, and I'll leave it at that for questions.
Are there any questions for Lou? If not.
Hey, Lewis Taylor, were you going to send that out?
I'd be glad to send it to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lou? I did skip over one item. Are there any new appointees that need to be sworn in if you missed last month's meeting? Hearing none, we will now move on to item number five, which is the taste and odor problem here at the Lake Dunlap Water Treatment Plant. And I will now turn it over to David Davenport.
Albert?
Yes.
This is Martin Corr, I was coming off of mute. I have not been sworn in.
Okay, you have not been sworn in?
No, I was not here last month, and I have not been sworn in.
All right. Everybody else, just be patient, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, or promised to pay, contribute, or promised to contribute any money or the thing of value, or promised any public office of employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which you were elected or as a reward to secure your appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be? So help you God.
I do so swear.
Okay, do you also solemnly swear that you will faithfully execute the duties of the office of trustee of Canyon Regional Water Authority and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect, defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state of Texas? So help you God.
I do so swear.
Okay. If you would go ahead and sign that document that was in last month's packet and either mail it in or try to get it to Canyon Regional's office so we can have that here as record. And then once it's here, I can go ahead and sign it that I swore you in. All right. Now we'll get to the taste and odor problem on item number five. Thank you.
Okay, we were asked to report on this at the last meeting. It's actually already passed. About May the 3rd, I guess, it was a Saturday, MBU had called and just asked if we had something going on. We do get these kind of calls quite often from the water companies where customer calls in that didn't exactly taste and odor caused by the plant. Tim Foose actually texted Adam and I on Sunday afternoon. This was kind of our first heads up. Evidently, Facebook was chattering about it. And then Monday, everything came in. Everybody called us. We actually did not know up until that weekend that we were having this event. Back in time, Lake Dunlap has had several different incidents where we've had taste and odor. My recollection was actually only two major events. 1996, GBA and the lake had treated for hydrola. After it was killed, it just sat in the lake and kind of fermented, I guess. Lasted for over three weeks and it was pretty severe. A lot of people called in on it. I'm going to talk about population detecting in in just a second. But we actually tried during that event to use potassium permanganate as an additional. I'll talk about potassium permanganate in a minute. There were no membrane filters at the time. All we had were the clarifiers and the sand filters. We decided after that to purchase a chemical feeder for powder-activated carbon. And we had that all set up. Actually, we didn't have any real taste and odor events and equipment was not used. In 1998, the first membrane filters were installed and we could no longer feed the powder-activated carbon because it would foul the filters. We moved on from that point to 2002. We actually added clarifiers to the treatment process, which we'd hoped would kind of help in treating for taste and odor. And I'll talk about how clarifiers work in a minute. We also added chlorine dioxide. In 2006, we had another pretty significant taste and odor. At that point in time, it was very clear Lake Dunlap turned a very bright green and we had a really heavy algae load. And using clarifiers and chlorine dioxide and chlorine, we weren't able to basically abate the taste. We did hire CPNY to do a taste and odor study. It's a pretty significant set of documents and we've used them since in terms of different elements. That was done in 2007. In 2018, of course, we've added ozone for THMs, but they also could be used in taste and odor. I'm sorry, I'm messing with turning the pages here. If y'all haven't experienced this, most of the time, the water's report is being earthy, musty, dirty, fishy, or swampy. It's a general complaint. Actually, not everyone can taste that. I, for one, don't detect it at all. There's a certain portion of the population depending on how much of the jasmin or MIB is actually in the water. This last event, it was fairly significant, and I know that quite a few people had called in. I've actually seen where a household, one of the man or wife can taste it and the other doesn't. And the spouse is saying, "We don't know what's wrong with the water. We think they're crazy." They'll be arguing about it, but it's actually a smell, which I'll mention again in a second. But the most likely cause is two elements, jasmin or metho, I can't pronounce it. I just call it MIB, usually in the source water. This is naturally occurring in the source water. And usually, jasmin in particular is described as earthy and it's actually in the soil quite a bit. When people are plowing, you smell that earthy smell that's usually stirring that up. Actually, human noses and taste buds can detect both of them at very low concentrations. But generally, it's the smell that you're picking up on. This is quite common in drinking water. Quite a few systems suffer even annually. I know Waco's famous for having trouble with taste and odor and algae blooms. I don't think we actually had an algae bloom this time. After the Lake Dunlap drained, I thought we were going to be pretty much through with it being more of a river and having the flows through it, and the algae just didn't seem. But there's another element they call where the water body turns over or inverts the temperature and it brings the surface particulate up and usually will dredge up these compounds. Let me move to the next one. Jasmin or MIB are not normally removed using a routine treatment process like we have. Basically, powdered activated powder or a carbon filter is probably the most effective and they're kind of expensive. Other way of doing it, and this was not an option for us, is just go to complete other source. And some people have that option, but in our case, we did convert significant areas back totally on Wells Ranch. It was a surprise to me, too, that this taste actually made it through the blend where we're blending both Dunlap and Wells Ranch water and made it out to populations. I thought it would kind of abate it in the blend, but it was strong enough to go through that. Next slide. Some of the treatment options, we could use copper sulfate in the source water. You could actually pour it in the lake and kill the algae or in the process. We do use copper sulfate, I have that on another slide. Optimizing plant process in the clarifiers, air stripping or aeration, oxidation and/or ozone treatment and absorption of activated carbon or carbon filters. Next slide. Copper sulfate, though, using it in the lake is probably not going to be something that we could do. We've actually spoke with the state quite a bit about this treatment and they're not too sure exactly what kind of permits you'd actually have to apply it directly to the water body. We'd have to get that permission and we're not feeling very hopeful that that would do it or that by the time we actually had taste and odor, it would make a difference. One of the elements when it comes to algae is that if you kill it, it releases both of these elements. I imagine if we tried treating Lake Dunlap, that the public opinion would probably be negative to it. negative to it also. Talking about inside of the treatment process and sedimentation or our clarifiers, if we had a flock that was able to grab hold and reduce the taste. Also, another element is reducing the algae growths within the plant. As soon as we found out that we had that taste and odor, we did go through and clean the clarifiers and the raw water tank and quit returning decant water or return water, try to reduce any algae that might be in the system. You're looking at pictures right now of the clarifiers that actually they settle the bigger part of the particulate out of the water and then go over the wares to go to the filter beds. We felt like that, for the most part, we weren't getting a large infringement inside of the clarifier. It had some algae in it, but I don't think it was causing the loading here. Next slide. Right over the top of this picture is the decant ponds in which I spoke. This is actually backwashed water and we let it settle and then that's returned to process. As soon as we found this out, we quit returning water and sent all of the backwash water out to the pivot system and to the field. Another process is aeration. You can do it in different places. Obviously, out in the raw water breaks up the algae. And that is something that we've thought about over time, is maybe just infusing air at the intake. We're not too sure exactly if that would work or not. We've actually talked to a company, I'm going to talk about in a second, that turns it over. But you can see either spinning it or something, changing the temperature would also break up any possibility of it having a thermal incline where the water turns. But you could also be dredging up from the bottom if you're moving from that, exactly what we're trying not to have. There's a company called SolarBee. In the past, we spent a lot of time talking to them. These things are pretty expensive. You actually put them floating in the water. They run off of solar panel power. They actually suck water from the bottom and bring it to the top to make the spin. When we actually visited with them in detail, though, they suggested that we buy several of them and put them upstream. They're subject to vandalism and have a lot of maintenance on them. Aeration down like a stair step or in a bubbler or some other configuration may be a possible solution here, but usually, aeration like this is used for iron and manganese, not these components. Adam, I was going to show here if you could put your cursor on Lake Dunlap. They suggested we put a...right down at the dam, I'm sorry, Adam. They suggested that we put an aerator there, but move on upriver, quite a ways even to where it narrowed, placing as many as three or four up in that water body. We were kind of in a throes right after fighting GBA about skiing and barricades. And again, as a question of could we even maintain them with the public out there taking the solar panels and all of them. So we kind of just let that lie and didn't pursue it. Next slide, Adam. The best approach to taste and odor, I basically copied this, is prevention of algae blooms in reservoirs by using copper sulfate. I did think I mentioned that once the water enters our plant, we do use copper sulfate to keep the algae down in the basins. You can add chlorine as an oxidant to try to keep it down, trying to keep hydrogen sulfide formation for that taste and odor problem. We do use copper sulfate in the plant. The main processes are chlorination, chlorine dioxide, potassium permanganate, hydrogen peroxide, ultraviolet light, or ozone, normally, and oxidation. Next one. Basically, we have most of those tools inside of this plant, but there really did not take out the taste. One of the things that we may have, could have fed a little harder on was ozone, but having gone through the bromate notices, we didn't want to exceed our levels and form bromates in the distribution system. If we actually spent the money and put in powdered activated carbon filters, this would probably be a...would take the taste and odor out. You could treat a percentage of the water, not all of it, but generally speaking, these filters are very expensive and they're very costly to maintain. And every so often, you have to redo the carbon inside of them, take it out, clean them, and replace them. Actually, the only test there is for detecting these taste and odors is just tasting it. There's not like a measurable...you put a test kit together and you get a reading. It all relies on a person. That's kind of problematic in its sense. It depends on who's tasting the water. And you get a lot of different scales there about how bad or good it is. Generally speaking, you know, day in and day out, we're really just kind of left with that. The customer base tells us when we're having this trouble. The problem with expending funds on carbon filters is so far, our record is, is we've had this every few years. We actually, in the past seven or eight years, we've had some really heavy algae blooms on Lake Dunlap and went through them without one complaint. We were able to treat pretty efficiently at it. I knew immediately when it started raining that we were done with it. Taste and odor components were in the water. And I tell everybody, it's like you poured sugar in the water. It's hard to get it out. And once that taste is there, it's pretty much embedded and it's going to be there. And other than having additional treatment capacity, we're kind of have our hands tied behind our back when this happens because we really don't have the tool it takes to get that sugar out of the water. I think that's my last slide. That's my explanation on it. Adam, did you have something you wanted to say about it?
No, I think you covered everything. I do want to say that we did maximize the chemicals and the various tools that we had in the plant, including ozone. We followed the recommendation by Garver Engineering this last year on the plant optimization where we met the one-to-one ratio, one part TOC to one part ozone. And so, the TOCs did come up during this time. And so, we did up our ozone to match that ratio, but kind of sweating the whole time. We did do some more sampling during that time to make sure we weren't going to form bromates. But that's all I would have to add. Are there any questions or comments?
So, our basic remedy happened to be the rain washed it out. Is that...am I understanding that right?
Yes. If we could perfect a rain dance, we could keep this from happening.
I'll work on that.
David, here. The one thing I think might be helpful, all of us as operators, is I think that if you get one or two reports from one or two different water users on the system complaining about taste and odor, it would be helpful if CRWA could send out, you know, kind of a warning email to us so we can get in front of it instead of waiting for it to become a Facebook dilemma. We can put a notice out saying that we think we may have a taste and odor challenge coming up from our supplier and they're working to remedy it. So we're, instead of waiting to get bombarded with all the negativity, we could put out a little bit of a notice and say, "We are aware. Our supplier's given us notice. There might be a taste and odor issue coming up and we're working to resolve it as quickly as possible." I think being a little bit more proactive might help us.
We can certainly try that. I mean, try to get that done, but again, I'll say that there's not a real good taste test. The operator comes in and tastes it. If they think that the water's fine, we're not getting a heads up. And really, the water goes out and we hear from y'all. We did. I know, Tim, you were the first to speak to us about, you know, give us notice. And then, on Monday morning, we got several other calls. As soon as we did know it, we tried to let everybody know that it was coming, but we were finding out from y'all. Now, we're already getting telephone calls by the time we were able to know it was there. But I have learned that Adam's pretty good at this. We're going to make him come by every day and drink water to make sure.
David, I'm one of the lucky ones, too. I pick up on the smell and taste right away. My wife doesn't notice it as much, but I picked up on it immediately. And I said, "We're having a taste and odor issue." And it wasn't, you know, a couple hours later, Facebook started lighting up with the same thing. So I knew it was coming because I could taste it, so.
Yeah. This is Victor Concur. Thank you, David, for that report on that. I did have to listen to my wife say that the taste was bad on that. But again, you could tell in Marion, but I appreciate y'all working through this and the explanation on that.
Are there any other questions for David on the taste and odor problem?
It's Tim Foose one more time. David, in your opinion, with the lake level down and less activity on the lake, do you think that's going to have an impact on that as we move forward with a smaller body, with nobody on it? We might get more temperature inversions?
Well, I actually thought that with it drained, we wouldn't have a taste and odor It could be that with the smaller body on our intake that we will see this more often. One of the things that I will say that we're kind of investigating, thinking about is if we could infuse air in the intake to try to stir it up as we get closer, to try to keep the temperature more even in the area. Maybe we wouldn't do that. We're going to play...we have an air pump, so to speak, and we're looking at how to get it down into the intake, but that may be a solution.
Are there any other questions for David about the taste and odor?
David, I also want to say, just like Victor said, I think that's a real good report. It gives us a lot of background on how taste and odor happens and the different mechanisms that can cause it as well as possible treatments. So, good job on doing that report. Thank you.
Any other? Not...let's go ahead and move on to item number six, which is the construction committee. We did meet last week at a conference. Most of the stuff that I had to report has already been brought up tonight, which is the waiting on the TECQ for the pilot study of the filters, the A&amp;M, or the cleaning of the tanks, Cunningham lawsuit, the Waggon Boost storage tank. But one thing that I need to report on is that after filing the certificate for the risk assessment report, CRWA, we found out that we did not have an emergency response plan for Wells Ranch, for the Hayes Coalwell Water Treatment Plant. So, the committee agreed to amend the agreement with CPNY for them to go ahead and create these reports and also to amend the agreement to allow an additional $45,000. So, that has been done and CPNY is working on updating the Dunlap Emergency Response Plan, but also creating one for Wells Ranch and for the Hayes Coalwell Plant. And that's all I have to report. Is there any questions for the construction committee? Not? We'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, which is the report on the Hayes Coalwell Plant Expansion Funding. Marcus, I think, are you going to handle that?
No, that's me.
David's got that.
So, just to kind of keep it on everybody's radar, we are going to have to add to the funding for the Hayes Coalwell Plant. We're looking at going out into the bond market. I included on page 76 a draft timeline that Mark McLean has been working on. We are looking at entering into an agreement with the City of San Marcos possibly to treat their water. We've been working on the details with the inter-local and what it would take to fund without having problems with the 10% rule. I think where we're at with San Marcos at the moment, that they will fund their portion themselves and pay cash for their element and buy in. We're getting very close to having that agreement in place then to move forward on the four entities amount that they need. One element that San Marcos asked was that could we have one agreement rather than an inter-local and a take-or-pay contract? We've actually asked the Water Development Board a question about whether or not they would accept that moving forward and have a renewed contract with the Hayes Coalwell Group and they would accept that contract moving forward. Fulbright has been working on that. After we get that answer, we would step forward with Legley. Ultimately, we're talking about closing and having money in January of 2021. Marcus reported on his portion, they are moving forward with the design at the treatment plan on the elements and working with the Water Development Board to kind of reconfigure the $5 million loan for more planning. And we're hoping that we'll be able to bid this out in the first part of 2021. There's any questions about that now? Glad to take them.
Do we have any questions for David on the funding for the Hayes Coalwell improvements? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to item number eight on the agenda, which is announcements and recognitions. Are there any announcements or recognitions that need to be brought up? I just want to make an announcement that I'm working on the committees. The construction committee in the past has had mainly the entities that were involved with the SWIFT funding, but since that's pretty well behind us and we're working on the Hayes Coalwell, I'm adding some of the member entities to that. If your name is not on there and you want to be on the construction committee and you're one of the members of the Hayes Coalwell Group, let David know or myself and I will add you to that construction committee so that way you will have some say in how we proceed on with this project. And then also, as once it gets started, you will be updated on the progress of that progress or of that project. Are there anybody else that wants to make an announcement or recognition? Are there anybody else that wants to make an announcement or recognition? Hearing none, item number nine, board member agenda items. Is there anything that any of the members want to see on the next month's agenda? That brings us to item number 10. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mike Taylor, so move.
Tim Foose second.
We have a motion by Mike Taylor and a second by Tim Foose to adjourn the meeting. Is there any further discussion? Anybody against? Motion carries. Thank y'all for participating in this meeting. See y'all next month.
Right, good meeting. Bye.
Good job.
Bye.
Bye, guys.
Good night.